Can you just check the trace? They're not picking us up. They're on. They look like they should be on. I just didn't hear it.
There is a sound.
Okay, got it. All right, could we do the roll call?
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Bowman.
Here. All right, and tomorrow I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference from Monday, July 13th, and the city council meeting on Tuesday, July 14, 2015. Now, we are at awards recognition of distinguished guests and communications. Do any council members have any awards recognitions or distinguished guests at this time? Now, seeing none, Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards recognitions of distinguished guests or communications at this time?
Not, not at this time. We have one appointment, but we're going to get to that later on the agenda.
We'll get there quickly.
Thank you.
And I'll just say for tomorrow, before we move on from this section, we do, we are going to have a recognition of the Huntington Band sort of early in our meeting. They have another meeting to get to, so we'll call them up towards the beginning.
You going to play anything for us, Mr. Chairman?
What's that? Oh, I don't know. Maybe they'll march on in.
I thought that'd be kind of cool.
Be a surprise. And then we will have a few updates on some meetings that, city meetings that happened throughout since our last meeting. Just to give everybody a heads up, Sammy, our frequent front row guest, is doing his MDA drive, and I'm sure he's going to be excited to ask everybody to support him in that. And John Bell Edwards, one of the candidates for governor, is going to be in town and is planning to stop by the meeting to say hello and introduce himself, so. We have those and probably a few other announcements for tomorrow during this session. Okay, at this point, seeing no other requests to speak, we will go to reports. Do we have any concerns relative to property standards that we need to take up at this point in time? Seeing none. Mr. Crawford for the revenue collection plan. Where do we, we're at the end of the month now.
We'll do that on next council meeting.
Yeah.
We've already done May, the last council meeting, so you'll get, I mean, June, you'll get July, next council meeting.
Great.
Yes, sir.
And then let's see, tomorrow will we have a master plan committee report? Great, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. We don't have any public hearings scheduled for tomorrow, so we'll move on to adding legislation to the agenda. Mr. Crawford, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And then today, we don't have any requests for public comments. Under confirmations and appointments, we will have the following appointments to be considered. Mr. Crawford, will you continue?
Director of Public Works, Mr. Dwan Gilliam. Civil Service Board Member, Fire Captain William Olegi. And Fire Engineer Olafabu Alamaguiwegi. If you say it with confidence, it's right.
We would not know if it was incorrect.
Those are, those are a lot of vowels.
They are.
I, I work for a guy who has a lot of vowels in his name and my other job, and, and it's always funny how slowly in phonics really help in those situations, you know? It's, it can be difficult to pronounce. But thank you so much for those. And if anybody has any questions about those confirmations or appointments to be considered tomorrow, please let us know. There is one item under consent introduction, under consent agenda for introduction, and then some for, and then I believe one for adoption. Mr. Crawford, can you?
One ordinance is up for adoption. Mr. Chairman, under consent agenda legislation, that ordinance is number 64, amending the 2015 budget for the general fund. This is going to provide $50,000 from the general fund operating reserve into property standards for grass cutting.
And that's for introduction, and then there's one under, what is that? 131, I guess, is that?
Adopt the ordinance is resolution, resolution, resolution 131, authorizing Barksdale Federal Credit Union located at 9475 LRB Road to connect to the water and sewer system of the city of Shreveport.
Great, thank you. And that's all we have under consent agenda. Are there any questions about consent?
I have a question on this ordinance, 64.
64. Okay. What you got?
What is, I'm not sure what we're doing there. I mean, are we?
We're introducing an ordinance, this is an ordinance that Stephanie's introducing, or that Councilwoman Lynch is introducing, where she's suggesting to move $50,000 into property standards budget for grass cutting. There's been some discussion about it, and she's proposing to take the $50,000 from the reserves. I don't like the idea of taking it from the reserves, so I've talked with her about potentially doing an amendment, but all we're doing tomorrow is introducing it.
You want to talk?
So we're not, we're not going to do a final vote on it, so I'm comfortable with the idea of introducing it, but we'll have some continued conversation about it before we vote on it for final passage.
Mr. Chairman, one other question has, to your knowledge, do you know if Councilwoman Lynch has approached the administration about some kind of compromise or something that we could do for mowing grass or anything?
I don't believe that she did before she introduced this, but she, I think they're aware of it now.
They're aware now. It was on the agenda before I was made aware, and of course, she tried to contact me this morning, but I've been on the phone since seven something, and then into meetings from eight, and right on into this afternoon until 2:45, so I've not had a chance to touch bases with her. I don't know if you've had a chance to talk with her, Mr. Crawford.
I've been in the same situation you have, mayor, been in meetings all day, and we have, I have consulted property standards and Dorothy Farnell, and they, we do have adequate funding operationally to do that, and that's one of the questions that we just have, is that increased money into that budget is not going to help us develop any further than what we've been doing right now and what they're, what they're able to execute, and we do have strong concerns about removing money from the operating reserve as we did the mid-year budget adjustments. It's down around 2.5 million, and certainly taking money out of there is the last thing that we want to do. Could potentially affect our bond rating and some other financial things.
Crawford, I guess I have some to learn, you know, but.
Sure.
Is it possible that we could, I, I don't know the words, task force, like SPAR, the street department, and some of these others that have mowers, that we could come together, maybe the mayor could put together what I call a task force where we could hit grass in certain council districts that, that are problems? I mean, I'm just asking.
Let me, if I may speak to that.
Sure.
Chairman, that's one of the things that we're going to be doing, and I think that most of us are aware that because of the weather, we've not been able to be as expeditious as we want to be. And then when the Red River flooding hit, we had to use our resources, human resources actually, to address all of that. But we're now back on track, we think. The weather is, is now allowing us to be able to do more, but we're going to be working together. We're actually going to look at how we can be more effective. I've already said to the CEO that we're going to pull together our team to see what it is that we need to do and how we need to follow up, but I, you know, I would, I would want to be able to do that first. I know with all of the rainfall back in April, May, you know, right into June when we hit all the flooding, we were unable to actually do the upkeep. But give us a chance now to go back and pull together what we can do. We do have people working together, maybe not as effectively as I'd like to see them do it, but we plan to actually have some meetings with every department who works with, you know, mowing and cleaning up our city. And then we're trying to work with communities to ensure that property owners are doing their part also. I think that you may have seen the media blitz a week or so ago, but that really wasn't us. That was a private property owner, but thank God, because of our initiative, we had someone to step up and say, I'll go cut that, that, that property for this person. We couldn't do that. We have to notify them first, and, and, you know, I could go on and on and on, but give us a chance to do that. I don't think that the $50,000 is going to help in that regard, because property standards can't do any more than what they're allowed to do based on the legal process we have to go through. We had that meeting with the subcommittee and talked about some ways that we could actually improve in that area. But, yes, if you'll, if you'll give us a chance to do that.
Appreciate you allowing me the time, but Councilman Jenkins made an outstanding comment several meetings back about the public helping to pick up paper and cut the medium, and, and, you know, I think that's not a bad idea to ask the public to help in certain areas to cut certain grass in their neighborhood. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for.
Absolutely, and I'll echo and also thank Councilman Bowman and Councilman Bradford, who attended the, the Property Standards Committee or Task Force meeting. It was the first time that committee had met in probably four years, and, and was a very productive conversation, and there were some, some suggestions that were made in there that'll be followed up on, that could cut down the amount of time that it takes for the city to be able to address some of these issues that we're seeing throughout the neighborhoods. And so we're very hopeful that some of the discussions there will result in legislation that will come before us that will allow us to address these things more expeditiously. So, so certainly on the right track, and we'll certainly all look for continued discussion. But as I said, I think that ordinance 64 is, you know, really just up for introduction tomorrow. I, I'm open to the idea of introducing it, and, you know, don't, don't see that we have a problem with that, though it does take, you know, it does take unanimous consent to pass the consent agenda, so make sure everybody's comfortable.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate the previous comments and some of what's already been said. It's answered a few of my questions. Grass, whether it's right-of-way, vacant lots, parks, it's a problem in every council district, not just select.
Council districts.
Just how it is, how it grows and where it is. I'm not a big fan of throwing money at problems if there's other ways of, of making those problems go away, and I think that mayor's comments through coordination and conversation between people that have the abilities is certainly something that we need to do. You know, I too have been following the media reports on this one particular piece of property that may be kind of the hotbed for this, and I went on the assessor site, and in less than three minutes, I was able to identify myself who owned that property. And, you know, in the news report, not only is it a privately owned piece of property, it's not an abated property or adjudicated property. And there's a commercial real estate sign out front. You know, it, from time to time, I have a grass issue in the district that I represent, and I don't hesitate calling that commercial realtor and saying, hey, you've got a lot at this street, I'm getting complaints about it, or I'm going to get complaints about it, and most of the time, that commercial real estate agent has somebody that's supposed to be maintaining that, and they're just not doing it. So, you know, I've said many times, I'm not a fan of taking more money out of our, out of our reserve. What I'd like, before I even vote to introduce this tomorrow, is if you would, if you have time to email all the council, the amount of money set aside in property standards budget this year for grass cutting, what remains? And then maybe tomorrow, if, in just a couple of minutes, we can talk about the notification process and the time that's involved there. If it's a privately owned piece of property, how many days do we have to notice before we can go in there, and what our constraints are? Because I think some of the citizens sometimes feel like the city's running a lawn service, and it's not really that way.
Absolutely. We can get that for you, Councilman Corbin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Councilman Bradford, and that'll be followed by Councilman Bowman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I guess I'm, I'm one of the councilmen that I should speak to, Councilor Lynch, regarding this proposal, and I think she, I think, I think initially, it's a, on the face, it's a good gesture that we try to resolve and eradicate as many of these, we didn't grow up, lots as, as, well, I mean, the grass is pretty much stopped growing as it was the previous couple of months. I mean, it's 100 degrees and most of the grass is dying, actually. So it shouldn't take much, but I think she'd be open to, to some options, and some options that has been even presented here this afternoon. But I think as it relates to introducing it, I want to give her opportunity to, you know, to articulate her, her, her overall plan and reasoning for looking at this amendment, I mean, in, in regards to the general fund. So, again, in talking with her on Friday, I, I was sympathetic to what she was saying, but I won't, you know, allow her to, you know, to, to make that same case to the full, full body.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Bradford, Councilman Bowman. On this, though, this was, was never brought up to anyone else, like, and administration just got it today, is from my understanding?
We got it Friday.
Friday, I believe, when the agenda was posted.
When it was posted on the agenda.
I'm, I guess I have to piggyback on, on Councilman Corbin. I'm not fond of throwing, throwing around money that's set aside for other purposes either, so I, I don't understand that one. That's, I'm, I'm off on that. So, okay, we'll, we'll listen to it tomorrow, okay? I just didn't understand, I thought we had already, we had previously discussed it with administration, and this, or someone else. One thing we may want to do, seeing as there seems to be some misunderstandings there, is if we want to make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda, you know, we only have one other thing on the consent agenda, so we could really remove that one or remove the other one.
You don't really need a motion if anybody wants to remove it.
Yeah, they're just, so somebody can just, if, so basically what I'm saying is, for the other item on the consent agenda, we're going to need consent, so if somebody wants to, you know, thinks that you're not going to be supporting this, all we have to do is, is ask that it be removed from consent agenda, and then it can be considered separately. So just as a procedural matter, just wanted to point that out.
If you could bring it back up at a later time.
No, we'll put it on the regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
Yeah, it would just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't die, it would just go on the regular agenda for individual discussion as opposed to being on the consent.
Be done, so.
Okay.
But one quote, procedurally, if it doesn't have four votes to be introduced, she can continue to bring it up, if I'm not mistaken. Haven't we been through this procedure in the last eight months or nine months at one point?
What was that?
Let's hear, let's, let's let her make her case on why she think she needs, this needs to be done, but I, I think, again, the response from administration is that, you know, it wouldn't matter as it relates to time-wise, if we put $100,000 in there. You know, it's just a matter of what we can do with what we got and the time that, that we have to do it in. So, but I think, again, we, you know, allow some options, and we can discuss those, I think I've heard some, where it would be satisfactory to her, to her concern and to her emotions, so. But anyway, we resolved that, that we put it on regular agenda, we can either vote it or not, but if we wait too long, you know, the grass is going to die anyway, so.
All right. Introduction of resolutions.
Okay. Sounds great, thank you. All right, and now we are at regular agenda legislation. Mr. Crawford, can you please proceed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Resolutions on second reading and final passage, or which will require only one reading. Resolution 128 authorizes the mayor to grant a utility easement and right-of-way to AEP SWEPCO on a portion of 77th Street in the Cedar Grove Addition subdivision in Section 25 T-17 North R-14 West. Resolution 129 authorizes the Shreveport Police Department to accept a donation of an 8-by-24 cargo trailer valued at $13,100 from J.C. Fondale Energy Services LLC to be issued to and utilized by members of the department's Office of Special Investigations. Resolution 132 to reorganize Huntington, I'm sorry, to recognize Huntington High School Raider Jukebox marching band.
I'm almost as excited to see how Councilman Flurry, Lynch, and Bowman all wrote it at the same time together. I mean, why did they leave the rest of us out? I'm kidding. Their districts all touch very close to the Huntington High area, and I know they're all proud to be part of that recognition. But we are now at introduction of resolutions. Mr. Crawford, would you please proceed with the introduction of resolutions?
Introduction of resolutions is not to be adopted prior to August 11, 2015. Resolution 133 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Red River Revel Arts Festival Incorporated. Resolution 134 authorizing a contract agreement between the city of Shreveport and the Independence Bowl Foundation Incorporated relative to the production of the Independence Bowl and related activities.
I see, we do have a representative from the Independence Bowl here today. If anybody has any questions, does anybody have any questions regarding 134? And I don't believe I see anybody from Revel, but, yeah, no questions.
I guess I'll just say congratulations again on them finding a title sponsor.
Absolutely, very, very happy to see that for y'all.
Looks like we got a really good candidate, and glad that you guys got that done.
Almost prophetic.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The value of this, of the city's, whatever endeavor in agreement with the board, what would the value of that be? Can anybody tell us?
The Independence Bowl?
Yes.
We contribute $140,000 annually toward the bowl itself, and we also split the cost of the screen for the, the scoreboard, the new scoreboard. We pay part of that, is it 40,000, shall we?
100,000.
It's 100,000, it's 100,000 as well.
Okay.
What is the economic impact? Is that a question?
Well, I mean, I was going to get, get to that, but I was looking at the, the actual liquidity that is being provided by the city to this endeavor, and we're at.
240,000.
And hard cash, and then there's.
Probably.
In-kind donations of another 75,000 to 100,000.
And that includes what?
The, the same thing that's included in the, the gambling game, the stadium, personnel, police, EMS, all of those things necessary to operate the bowl itself.
So they're estimating that cost, or the value of that contribution at somewhere between 75,000.
We have 325 now, pretty much.
Somewhere in that area, yes, sir.
And, okay. Even though in the past, there's been some questions regarding the Independence Bowl transparency, was that, was that a concern of yours, administration?
When you say transparency.
That they was not providing other resources in how they was being utilized.
Well, you know, they did with me.
They did.
We, we did have a meeting when I first came aboard, of course, you know, I'm seven months in, and we've already had a meeting with the Independence Bowl, and they did share with me, you know, other agents and other sponsors. So, you know, we now know that, and we now know who don't really participate, but, but the economic value, we thought, to Shreveport still for our way, what we put into it. Nationally, we are, you know, recognized, but we also have a pretty good economic impact.
And I have to say, in terms of, you know, just seeing how, because obviously there were some difficulties in the, in the last year with the bowl, but just seeing how the management and leadership at the bowl in the last few months has operated, has been very encouraging.
Yes, very much so.
They're certainly headed in the right direction.
And I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I hope that's, that's the case. I didn't support the bowl last year, I didn't even attend, even with the complimentary provisions that was made to us on election day, I mean, on swearing-in day.
Yes, it was.
Because I, I didn't like the package, the agreement between the bowl and the Duck Dynasty people, and it appears that I was pretty close to being accurate in that they, they just didn't appear to be trustworthy in their commitment, and I'm hoping that, that we move past that, and let us, you know, get on one accord and move this bowl forward and, and reap the benefits, Mayor, of the economic impact.
Absolutely, but we're always looking for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that, we appreciate that discussion, and now we are at introduction of ordinances. Mr. Crawford, would you please proceed with introduction?
Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to August 11, 2015. Ordinance 61 declares the city's intentions to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments Concordia Place project. Ordinance 62 is declaring the city's intentions to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for community developments Coopersville Estates project. Ordinance 63 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 65 creates and establishes a know-through truck route on Gilbert Drive between Monrovia Street and Pyramid Road. Ordinance 66 is a zoning ordinance C-9-15, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located approximately 185 feet west of Woolworth Road, being the same as hereby changed from R-A residential Agriculture District to B-3 Community Business District with site plan approval. Ordinance 67 is a zoning issue C-61-15, amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located between Hearn Avenue and Virginia, approximately 131 feet south of Marion Streetport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, legally described below, being the same as hereby changed from R-2 Suburban Multi-Family Residential to B-1 Buffer Business District with site plan approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have questions about items that are up for introduction, for ordinances? Seeing none, unless, Councilman Bowman, is this a current, I see it. Click, but I think it's old. Okay, now we're at ordinances on second reading and final passage. Mr. Crawford, can you proceed?
Will do. Ordinance 55 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordinance 56 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. Ordinance 57 amends the 2015 grant special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 58 amends the 2015 water and sewer enterprise fund budget. Ordinance 59 amends and reenacts Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances relative to vehicle for hire. Ordinance 60 amends and reenacts Article 9 relative to peddlers, solicitors, and other public vendors, and Article 10 relative to charitable solicitations of Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordnances.
Okay, I know we had significant discussion about that in the past, but let's see. Request to speak, Councilman Bowman, did you have one first, or is that still the old one? I think you just had an old request that just doesn't clear it off yet, and I hit clear, but there it went. Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have some concerns about this ordinance 60, and I, I would like to ask a couple of questions, but, but more importantly, I may need to ask for tomorrow that this be postponed for the very reason that this, this ordinance was taken up about 15 months ago, Mr. Chairman, and you introduced it up here, and I would like to know what changed, what has changed that would make us want to amend it again? Are you aware of the ordinance of 151 of 2013? Are you aware of that ordinance regarding?
151 of 2013?
Yeah, regarding, I mean, the same, it's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, we discussed this for some months. I don't believe I was the author of it.
It was passed 7-0 on, on December the 10th, 2013, and, you know, 7 over vote with, you know, the council members that was on the council at that time, I would vote for it, and I would like to ask the, and we can ask this tomorrow, I would like for somebody research to tell me, have there been any incidents regarding this practice? And I know I've heard the rationale of why we should stop it, but I want to know what, what has changed as it relates to, have there been any accidents, incidents that has caused us to be more alarmed and more concerned now than we were a few months ago?
Councilman Flurry.
Councilman Bradford, what we spoke with, and if someone just asked the police department to step in, please.
Yes, please.
What, what we discussed in the public safety is that we don't want to get to the point that we're going to cause one, by not taking action, of causing someone to lose their life. We have, the worst scenario is people out in the roadway. We have laws on the books right now that you have to get a permit, that you can stand on the corner, and, and we're putting the city at a liability, because if we have someone that gas, hits the gas instead of the brake and runs over one of these children, now, just recently, we had a lot of people out in the street in my district that. Now, just recently, we had a lot of people out in the street in my district that were wandering out there trying to raise money for a loved one's funeral, and what I heard in the Public Safety Committee was that, yes, we did have a fireman in Bowser that got hit that was out in the street. And I think what, to answer your question, Councilman Bradford, is that we don't want to put the city in that position that we allow something to go on that could be dangerous or harmful. Mr. Chief Olson, is that...
Yes, sir. And one of the things that brought it up when the Public Safety Meeting you were talking about, we mentioned it, we'd had several complaints from not only members of the council, but also from a state representative about people being in the street. We took care of that. We brought it up the next Public Safety Meeting, said, "Look, this is an issue. People see people in the street collecting money, they think, they just assume it's okay," and what you wind up with is cheerleaders collecting money, you have people in the street everywhere. That's why we brought it up. When we brought this up back in 2013, 14, there were several options discussed with the council at that point, Public Safety Committee. One was to eliminate it altogether, and I think that we talked about a revision that was going to do it to 25 miles an hour, which would keep it in the residential areas where the cars are not moving very fast, and then at some point it changed again to 35 miles an hour. So we went through several revisions from eliminating it altogether to what you see now as the current revision. The flood of complaints that we got is what prompted us to bring it to the Public Safety Committee, is we're getting calls again about people being in the street.
And I don't think we were saying that they couldn't have, we just want it in a safe area.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Like a lot of places do. I mean, I'm sure you've been places like I have, whether it's Lowe's, Target, Walmart, they're collecting money at the door, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, no danger of somebody being run over sitting by with a table set up by a door.
Okay, again, I guess my question was, to your knowledge, and I'm going to read through the previous one, but to your knowledge, in Shreveport, Louisiana, had there been an incident that occurred because of this practice?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's what I, that's what was my question. And I understand trying to be proactive and looking at issues, but I mean, but heck, we would have to write a whole kill log of ordinances if we was going to try to protect every incident that possibly could happen in Shreveport. And I'm, I don't, you know, I'm going to read the ordinance, and my second question was, did anything change over the last 15 months that take, that the position would take, that the police department would take a different position than they did back in December of...
The police department, if you look at the minutes from the council meetings previously and the public safety meetings, Chief Shaw and I have both addressed this council and said, "You will never hear a policeman say it's a good idea to stand in the street from a public safety standpoint, never." I mean, I was taught that as a kid growing up, don't get in the street.
So, as the ordinance was written previously, was it enforced? Was it, was all the provisions and the protocol that was listed that needs to happen for meeting and so forth, was that, was that done?
To my knowledge, it has been.
Well, you say you saw some kids in the street somewhere.
Right, we get complaints.
Complaints that kids in the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and if that happens, what's the response from the police?
We go out there and tell them, "You can't do this."
Get out of the street.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, I did. I mean, I interrupted.
I mean, I'm just trying to understand, and again, I need, I'm going to read this, I just got it this afternoon, to see exactly what is it that's changing.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, I, you know, as I was campaigning for office, I heard a lot of, a lot of issues, a lot of concerns, a lot of things that my constituents were saying, you know, "Y'all need to do down there." Stopping soliciting wasn't one of them. So let me, let me look at this, and I want to sort of understand clear what we're about to do, because I witnessed something even this weekend when the Book of T Washington football team was selling barbecue dinners and was trying to raise funds, help them get some equipment and supplies as the season is beginning to start. I see little league baseball teams and AU basketball teams out on the corner trying to solicit funds to help them go to a tournament or to a camp, and I just can't just arbitrarily say, "Y'all, y'all, we're going to deny y'all that opportunity when we have no other option for them to receive funds," because the people that I represent are some of the least of the citizens who don't have the resources. They're usually from economic disadvantaged areas, households, where they don't have the funds, and to deny them the opportunity to ask the public for assistance, I just want to be careful that we don't become an unfriendly city to our citizens. And I'm just going to read this, and tomorrow I have further stuff to discuss.
Yes, sir. And if you, if you look back, Chief Shaw addressed the council a year before last when this came up, and his stance and mine has remained unchanged since all this started, that from a public safety standpoint, we don't think it's a good idea for anybody to be standing in the street.
And, you know, and again, I'm just saying, as relates to introducing ordinances, I read over the weekend where after the shooting in Lafayette, that one of the state representatives wanted to introduce a bill where all the movie theaters in Louisiana have metal detectors. And, you know, some people responded that that was misguided, and because of one isolated incident, and I know it wouldn't be misguided if it happened again, but at the same time, you know, you haven't cited any incident that this practice has caused, and we don't want it to happen, but somebody's being careful, somebody's being careful in spite of what you were saying, "Oh, I'm scared for these youngsters, I'm scared for these people," but obviously, nobody has gotten hurt, and somebody's being careful. But nevertheless, I can go either way, but I want to be clear on what my position is, because I just got this document, and I just want to read it, to what would reverse something that this council did not too long ago to adhere another, another practice that we're asking the citizens to do without any, any incident or any fighting of a situation that would alarm us to take this action. So, thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, may we bring up Chief Wolverton, because we look at it from a national perspective, and I wanted you to hear this other perspective. I think one of the things that we try to do is be proactive and try to, I guess, minimize the liability on the city, because things are happening in other cities because of this kinds of thing, and, you know, and we want to be as proactive as we can to try to ensure that we don't get the lawsuits and the litigation, and I'm thinking about some other cases since I've been mayor, where we are now, you know, trying to litigate because maybe we didn't realize that the city was going to be liable for those, but I want, I wanted Chief Wolverton to talk to you a little bit about an incident that we know that happened nationally with this same kind of situation.
Just as I was, I just received this email while this discussion was taking place. I receive emails every day on firefighters that are injured. It says, "Georgia Fire Chief struck by truck during boot drive." They were out collecting in the street, MDA boot collection, and he was hit by a truck and had to be transported by helicopter to Atlanta Hospital, a hospital in Atlanta. He's in serious condition. These are the things that we're trying to prevent, and I'm sure he had his vest on to have high visibility in the street, and even when doing everything right, this can still occur. There's an old saying that we go by, I say it's old, not that old, but if it's predictable, it's preventable, and this is clearly predictable from a public safety standpoint that someone could seriously get hurt or injured collecting in the street. And, you know, from a public safety standpoint, we feel like this is the best ordinance that we could have in place to not allow this to take place. And I understand and definitely empathize with exactly what you were saying about those agencies, that this is, this is where they get a large majority of their funding. We've had to adjust also as a fire department on our charitable collections that we do for most of the district free. Right now, we partner with Walmart and Sam's and Kroger, and they allow us to collect in their parking lots on weekends, and we proactively go out and visit them and ask for that permission, and they have allowed that. And, you know, some of these organizations will probably have to do the same. I think a lot of these businesses in town are more than willing to allow that to occur. So, you know, there's other ways of doing the collection from a safety standpoint.
Thank you, sir.
And if I could say one last thing, I notice, you know, every day when I'm traveling to different events, with the high volume of texting going on, even though it's illegal, we still have those people who are not paying attention, and they take their eyes off, and that's one thing that has escalated, Councilman Bradford. We've got the younger generation who texts constantly, and, you know, we just want to make sure that we put it on the table so that council members can know that this is a potential dangerous situation for our people, our adults as well as our youngsters, and that we will, you know, certainly try to help them be able to find other ways to raise funding, because I too understand, coming from the school system, how sometimes youngsters use that avenue to be able to raise funds, but we got to find a safer way. Otherwise, we pay the price with the lives of our people and with liability on the city. So I think that we, you know, I would hope that we will look for other ways to help these agencies and these organizations and these schools.
All right, Councilman Flurry?
I have a voice.
Okay, Councilman Jenkins?
I was just going to point out, sadly, the examples you use are one of the reasons we're in this problem, because violations, both Little League and Huntington are in violation of the current ordinance, and that nobody can solicit under the age of 18 to begin with. One of the reasons we went on a very strict and I'll say regimented approach to, for those that felt like this was one of the few ways that they could actually raise money legally, we tried to give them some latitude to do so. And frankly, one of those organizations is a repeated violator. Every week, I see them in the middle of the street soliciting. They are not on the side of the curb, and we have the same problem with the children. I mean, at some point, you just have to rein this in at some level, or we will have an accident. I mean, we, we have tried to accommodate groups in many different ways, and frankly, they're just not willing to play by the rules. No other way to look at it. Anyway, I won't say anything.
All right, Councilman Bowman?
I didn't ask, I didn't, I didn't understand what was, what would prevent the people that, like, and what you're saying in your area, from going to, like, the corner store or something like that, where they have to go out in the street and solicit. That's what I didn't understand.
Councilman Bowman, you know, again, I represent a very, a very poor district. They don't have the means to travel too far outside of their domain, okay? We don't have a Walmart within 15 miles of MLK, okay? We don't, we don't have the, you know, the retail outlets or the areas that will be able to afford them to really benefit for their cause where they are, you know, I mean, from where they live at. Allendale's the same thing. There's no, there's no real opportunities within that area, you know? I mean, the corner of, you know, Pier Avenue and Malham or Hearn and Malham may be, may be the best opportunity for them to, you know, to raise a hundred dollars to help them, you know? And again, it's not a one-size-fits-all problem, but, and I understand, trust me, I understand everything everybody said. That's not the issue here. The issue here is that there are more people that have accident from texting or running red lights than there are from soliciting some pennies off the street, and if we're going to be careful and, you know, and institute laws to address these that may cause us to be at risk, you know, they can say, "Well, y'all ran a red light, you know, it should have been longer since I'm a suit of city." I'm saying there's a lot of, there's a juggle of things that could happen that will fall under the category of what can we do to lessen or limit the risk factor of Shreveport getting sued for something? And I understand that the chief of the fire in Georgia got hit, and a youngster at Malham and Pier didn't get hit, and I'm saying that there's, again, there's a factor issue here. What caused that to be distraction to allow somebody to hit them? But, but again, I'm just looking at, to answer your question, is that the opportunities for resources to be gathered from the least of the citizens of this city would not be afforded the same as those that live in other districts. And again, I want to care about, because if something happened to a youngster and I supported letting them be on this corner, I mean, I wouldn't, I can live with that. But at the same time, I want to be certain of the risk that, is it perceived or is it just, you know, and I, because it hadn't happened. Yeah, you tell me what happened in Georgia, what happened in Bowser years and years ago, but you have not said. In Shreveport, Louisiana, we getting hit by a vehicle from soliciting is greater than somebody running red lights and having a motor car accident. And, and, and again, I'm open, but I'm just using, representing the people that I think I need to represent in this issue, on this issue. And that's what I'm saying, that they don't have, in Allendale, they have to go six miles to go to even a country, county market if they're going to stand on the county market lot. There's nothing within a five or six mile radius of Allendale to allow them to solicit anything, and they don't have the transportation.
How are they getting to the city hall to get their permit and vest?
I don't know. I didn't stop in, in, in...
I mean, if they have no transportation, then they...
I mean, it don't take an adult to go get that.
I mean, they're violating so many...
No, they may be. They may be, but I, again, I'm saying, that's not...
That ain't been open, you waiting on the train rail to happen.
No, no, no.
Mr. Chairman. I mean, I've almost hit the double speed limit issue. I'm in the middle of Yurian King, and I don't see them.
Wasn't there a speed limit, a speed limit issue that you guys passed to pass the last ordinance? Wasn't there a speed limit restriction?
There was.
We tried to keep it at a speed limit, and it got overruled.
Okay, all right. Let me, let me read this document, and I can make my case even stronger if I need to, or I will submit to the, to the pledge of the council.
Yes, Councilman Corbin?
Councilman Bradford opened his comments with a statement of why are we going about looking at something that we, that we passed just a few months ago?
Yes, sir.
And I don't think we've ever really answered that, and I'm just, I'm going to give you my interpretation of it. What was before that body at that time, that council, that was the only thing that would get votes.
Sir?
That was the only legislation, legislation written that way was the only thing that would pass with votes. It's not perfect in most of our minds, it's not good, and that's why it's back on the table today.
I see. Thank you.
All right. That being said, we are now at tabled legislation. Mr. Thompson, are we aware of any tabled legislation to be considered?
Not aware of any, Mr. Chairman.
All right. That brings us to property standards appeals. Ms. Farnell, are you in here?
She's on her way.
Hiding behind the column.
Councilwoman Efferson? We have two cases today. Our first case... I've been helping because it's not working, but our first case is going to be in Councilman Bradford's area, that is 1220 North Hearn Avenue. The owner is present, and I have requested the architect be here, so Mr. Smith, Nelson, would you please come up? I would like you to know that the plans have not been submitted for approval with the state fire marshal, but they did clean the property. It looks good now. The grass has been cut, so... They're both here. You all wish to question or...
Well, I mean, my question would be, and I'm sorry, but it was, it was reported to us that the plans had been submitted. You're telling me that the plans had not been submitted?
Well, sir, what ended up, my name is Donald Smith.
No.
What have not? What ended up happening was...
Would you give your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Donald Smith. My address is 824 New London Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. What ended up happening with this incident was, Ms. Roslin hired me to do the plans. I'm the designer on the project. Well, I got an engineer. I hired an engineer, and he dropped the ball on it, because the information... I hired an engineer, and he dropped the ball on it because the information he was relaying to me, I was relaying to Ms. Roslin. Well, when I got the call two weeks ago, and I pressed that engineer for what was going on, then he finally told me that he ended up, excuse me, getting bigger projects and put hours on the back burner.
Sir, in all due respect...
Yes, sir.
I mean, we, it's not personal. We're here to address business, and Ms. Patterson argued, made a very serious and compelling argument that those plans had been submitted to the fire marshal.
Yes, because she was, she was relaying that information, information I was relaying to her.
No, she, she went on, as for, she relied on you 100%?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. She relies on, she relied on...
And we made a decision based on information that was erroneous. That's, that's not how we do business. We can't, we can't. We have to have the proper and correct information. We can't, we can't make decisions based on hearsay and, and my cousin gave me the wrong information. I mean, I don't know what to do because, because I was in a position last week to, to accept the recommendation of the director. But in giving Ms. Patterson the benefit of doubt, I asked the council that we will postpone so that the, that the evidence of the submission to the fire marshal would be produced today. That was, that was, that was the reason for the postponement, that the day somebody's going to bring us evidence that, that the, that these plans for this project was, had been submitted. And that, that's what we was going on. So, so I don't know what, I don't know, I don't know how to receive what you're saying.
Sir, I apologize because I was not aware of that. Like I said, from the incident that happened, and I'll take full responsibility for it. And I am working closely with another engineer to make sure these plans get submitted. Our full intent is to have those plans submitted this week to the state fire marshal's office.
Are you here?
A quick question. Who is the original engineer?
At this time, I'd rather not say because I'm in the process of looking at having, filing a suit. So I'd rather not say. The engineer that I have now, his name is James Sides.
James, how do you spell his last name?
Sides, S-I-D-E-S.
And do you know what his company is called or...
Sidelines, Sidelines Incorporated.
It's a local firm?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sides is a civil engineer here in Shreveport. He actually works full-time for International Paper in Lansville, and he and I have partnered on several projects around the city.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, what do you suggest? I mean, how, what is your response to this?
I am still waiting for the plan to be able to proceed. And as I had said before, take it off the docket here, let it go to First JDC. That's, that's what I've always said. If you wish to give them more time to bring it back, I'm not going to object, but as again, what I have always suggested has not changed.
Mr. Chairman. I mean, my position is, has always been, if we can, if we can salvage a property, we should give that priority. We should, we should do everything we can to try to maintain a structure that could be rehabilitated. And it appears that this property could be rehabilitated. It's just that we just got into a situation that I am not comfortable with. I don't, I, I have employees, and I have patience, and I have to make decisions based on the information that is given to me. I can, I can make a decision on false, erroneous information, and it could cost, it could cost a lot. And I really, I'm really sort of disappointed that, and you're telling me that Ms. Patterson wasn't aware that she was giving us false, inaccurate information. But nevertheless, the structure's still there. The yard, the grass has been cut.
Yes, it has.
Would it be, would it, would it be in order for me to ask for a postponement for two weeks and the plans, if the plans are not, have not been filed, and we don't have evidence that the plans have been filed in two weeks, that we would unequivocally move toward the submission of this, of this project to the next, to the next level? I saw movement, Chairman.
We've got a motion, and I'll second that motion, from Councilman Bradford to postpone for two weeks. Any discussion? All right, let's, let's vote.
Our next case is...
Wait, we got to wait for the vote once. Councilman Bradford, it looks like it needs your vote. All right, and that looks like five to one, motion passes. All right, Dorothy, we're ready to move.
Our next case is in Councilwoman Lynch's area, 618 Argyle Street. The owner is present. He has made significant improvement on the property, the foundation and all. I'm asking for 60 days for him to have total completeness of this...
So move for 60 days, just a second.
Can we second the motion?
Councilman Jenkins did. Looks like he's gotten a lot done. Motion passes, six zero. All right. I don't have any ABO appeals.
Dorothy is up here, I have to bring up a property standards. So she probably knows what this is about. Okay, for those that were here, Mr. Davis had multiple property standards violations. We pa, we approved demolition or supported the recommendation for demolition, if I'm not mistaken here, about, about a year ago. He, did he challenge it in...
He filed in First JDC. He filed, he appealed the demolition, but did not appeal the care premise.
Okay.
And you want to know the results of why? It is because when it went before the judge, he ruled against the demolition, put it on the, told us to clean up the property, but it was on a demolition, and we could not do that. I talked with legal, and because it was for one violation, the judge ruled on another, we could not go on the property and evade it. So that's where we are on that.
Okay. So now he's had two court dates, and he hadn't shown up for either one of them, if I'm not mistaken. And now he's back on court for August 11?
There is a warrant. He had about five cases. Now, it depends on which one you're talking about. He, there are, there is, there is a warrant.
To be honest, I'm not sure which one I am talking about. Because the guy's been, I mean, for five years, he's been playing this game.
There is a warrant out for his arrest, and that has been handled by the marshal's office. He is supposed to come back. I'm not sure of the dates, but we do have some pending dates. But yes, and...
Okay. So now, let's go back to the, whatever the house that we really worked on in June. I can't remember what street that is on, but I know he's got three separate properties that are in various stages of trial. But this is the one that I think he's in. He's got the warrant out for not showing up in court. That one, he's repaired the roof, apparently, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
Now the demolition, there's no cause for demolition anymore. Is that correct or not? Or do we still have that violation out there for him?
Because it went before the judge, it was closed.
Okay, so that's closed.
So that's closed.
But now the ent...
But there is a care premise on the property as we speak now.
And that's where we are not allowed to...
We weren't allowed to do anything with it because what we had to do, as I said, the order was made on the incorrect violation, so we couldn't move forward. We since have started, not that one again, but we're working with the city attorney to see how we can move forward with it before we just close it and start all over because we don't want to do that. He does have cases on this same property pending in city court also.
Okay. So, and I don't, and I'm happy to go offline with anybody in the city, I mean, in the city attorney's office to explain it to me. I mean, they, these people are living, I mean, y'all were not here last year, but...
They are.
We had three blocks of people come in complaining about this guy. I mean, it was, we finally had him after all these years, and we thought we were finally going to make progress, and a year later, you know, sadly, we haven't.
And one of the things, Councilman Jenkins, is one of the, one of them, he did, was picked up on one case. He bonded out of jail. One of the other things is, between the three houses, we turned it over to the marshal's office. They've had a difficult time trying to find him because he's either at one of the three, and so we've been relying heavily on them also to try to find him after hours or early morning, so it's been a challenge. And then once he claimed he was sick in the hospital, so, yes.
Okay.
So we haven't given up. We are continuing with it.
Well, then, I guess from a legal standpoint, if you can, just give me a buzz so that I can understand what we need to do next on this thing. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Corbin.
Dorothy, I just wanted to be sure that I heard what you said correctly because I might have been multitasking up here. We went before the judge on our demolition order, and the judge said, "No, you're not going to demolish it." But did you say the judge told the city to clean up the property?
Yes.
How does that work?
We, we are going to file a lien against it, but yes.
But it's like a weed, man.
The owner has to go in and clean it up because he had not done so himself.
But I also believe, I'm under the impression that between the time he left here and actually got to the judge, he had had the roof repaired or some, somewhere in there, the roof got repaired.
That was his argument the whole time, was you do that and gate.
All right. Well, I mean, for those, this gentleman takes, he has, he's got a lot of debris, and he moves it from house to house. And so you can never, by the time the violation is in place, he can move it before the timing goes back to the previous.
Yeah, it is a tough situation.
We have him.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dorothy. We don't have any ABO appeals today, nor do we have MPC or zoning appeals. And if we have any reports from officers and boards and committees, why don't you, as your present to our clerk, save those? Oh, is he gone already? Okay, he's still here. I was going to say, it is Art's birthday today, and I think he's trying to get out of here to get somewhere at a pretty set time, so we'll forgive him if there's no clerk's report. Although I do know that under his clerk's report, he was going to mention that Mr. James Hurd is, I believe, here today.
He's here today, yes.
Yes, there. Mr. Hurd, did you want to come up and introduce yourself?
He is up for appointment for the Catibouche Report Commission, not at tomorrow's meeting, but the following meeting, unless we vote to suspend the rules and consider it early.
He's back from ordering his birthday cake.
There he is.
We have ice cream and cake out of them.
I think he is...
Well, somebody else has a birthday tomorrow.
Oh, do they?
I don't know his name, but he lives in, I mean, he represents this city.
All right. An illustrious birthday weekend.
It's a big week.
Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry. If you would like to just introduce yourself, that would be great.
My name is James E. Hurd, Sr. I'm a local business owner here in the city of Shreveport, and I'm a lifelong citizen of Shreveport. Uh, would you need my address?
Uh, yeah, your name and address.
Oh, right. Okay. Well, I live in, now in Greenwood, Louisiana, at 8322 Tanya Drive.
Okay. And Mr. Bradford?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hurd, how you doing?
Hey, how you doing?
Let me just be candid and ask and say this, and thank you, Mayor, for the appointment. I've been knowing Mr. Hurd for years, and I respect him as a businessman and as a, as a great citizen of this city. But it has been, it has been alleged that the Bowger appointees are stronger than the Shreveport appointees, the previous, before this mayor started appointing commissioners. But there has been, it has been alleged that the Bowger has a stronger delegation of appointees than the Catibouche delegation. You familiar with the port, I trust?
Well, somewhat.
What, 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 what do you feel like you can bring to the port?
Well, I bring my lifelong experience. I've been, like I say, I've, I've worked in, did business in Shreveport for the past 50 years, you know? So I've been on various committees, citizen committees, weight committees. I was an employee at AT&amp;T for 30 years. I was executive on the union executive board for five years. We did negotiations for contracts and things of that nature. So I'm a member of DPEC now, along with you. And, I mean, I've been on quite a few, like I said, I'm on DPEC now, and I was on the African-American Chamber of Commerce Executive Board.
Mr. Hurd, I have no question about your, your leadership abilities, you're a strong, you're a strong, you're a strong man. You, you, you grasp issues quickly, and you, and you can respond to those. I have no question that you will represent well. But I'm, I want to see something meaningful, intangibly changed, that would benefit the diversity of Shreveport. And I'm hoping that you could look at how the port could play a role in being co-partners with the administration and the council to create opportunities for everybody within Shreveport, within Shreveport.
Well, what I'm planning on, like I say, I don't know all what they got on their agenda on the port board, but I'm willing to sit down and see, but I'm planning on serving the city of Shreveport and Bowger to the best of my ability. And I'm very honored that the mayor asked me to be on her team. But exactly what I'm going to do, I have to get there and see what's going to be done.
That's, that's reasonable. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm really, I'm really happy that you were selected as a, as a commission. I think you, I think you'll do well. And you get with another friend of mine down there, James Parnell, and just tell him that you came to help him.
Well, I know James very well. You know, like I say, I've been working and doing business in Shreveport for 50 years. I'm just, all of my working life, I should say.
Madam Mayor, if it's privileged to know who's he, is he replacing anyone? Is that a vacancy?
No, sir. He's replacing somebody.
Is he?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Thank you, Mr. Hurd.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let's see, at this point, we have additional communications from the mayor?
Nothing.
Thank you. And any additional communications from council members?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, and it's actually for everybody, and it's for the mayor specifically. I got a, I got a call over... I got a, I got a call over the weekend from Rod Brusart, you know, you know? He invited me and I don't know if he invited anybody else to come out to the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association meet tomorrow night. But, but the strange part that he asked, he, he said the agenda item was going to be talking about the center point contract. And I guess my question is, and I, if you're not comfortable answering it, why, why are we talking about something that has already been approved? Is that, is that, is that normal? I mean, what, what could happen within the confines of the neighborhood that would alter what happened here, uh, last month or month before last?
I think they're just unhappy with the, or maybe don't, maybe feel like they would like the opportunity to express opinions.
They want to fuss at us? They want to fuss at us?
Yes, and me specifically, yes.
They want to fuss at you?
Yes.
You didn't tell them you didn't pass, and you just, the city council passed it. Blame, blame the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take it too, either way.
I just got to ask a question. We didn't impose anything on...
But I thought that was strange, that they wanted to come out so they could talk about the center point issue. I'm like, that has already been resolved.
I, I think the most pressing question that we ought to be concerned with in that meeting is if, uh, Councilman Jenkins is buying our stuff.
I agree with that. That's his district, right? Yeah. Okay, after, after we can go to stuff.
As long as not more than four of you go, huh?
Yeah, we, I'm not sure if we're going to worry about public meetings requests issue that we have to notify.
Oh, we got it out. You got it out, Councilman Corbin.
By the way, you know, I learned that from Joe Shine. Statements and agreements, and all in the end, he always had a way of getting out of it. He was happy to, you know, suggest other people do it for him.
Oh, sure, I'm sure. So, let's see, right now we are at, um, the part in our meeting where on our regular meeting, we would have public comments that are about items that are not on the agenda. According to our rules, we are not supposed to do those, um, at our work session. Um, our, our rules say that, um, uh, public comments on matters that are not on the agenda are at the regular meeting only. However, we do have two requests for public comments and I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules in order to hear the request. Okay, uh, we have a motion for the Councilman Bradford to suspend the rules in order to hear the, um, public comments.
Oh, second, if we also add to that, we stay within the given timeline.
Agreeable? Is that agreeable? To the maker of the motion?
Sure, yes.
Yes, it was true. All right. And Councilman Jenkins and Bradford, it looks like they didn't register y'all's votes. All right, motion passes unanimously. Um, first request I had is from Mr. Melvin Slack regarding, uh, visibility on Pines Road. Mr. Slack, if you'll come up, you'll have three minutes. Just state your name and address for the record and then your time will start.
My name is Melvin Gerard Slack. Address is forty-one forty-one Pines Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, zip code seven eleven nineteen dash seven three oh nine. First giving our glory to my Lord and Savior, whose name is Jesus Christ, uh, to the honorable, Miss Holly Tyler, the mayor, as well as the rest of the people that sits on the board. What I want to bring to you all's attention is that I live at forty-one forty-one Pines Road and right next door to me is the, where you turn to go into Beal Cockle Community Center. Okay, we have a lot of kids come from Lotte area area, a lot of kids come from behind the Pines Road area and a lot of kids running from Beal Cockle Community Center. And if you're coming from Greenwood Road, uh, direction to Beal Cockle Community Center, we have about five blind spots. And when you go down, you can't see when, when you come up, and when you come up, you can't see when you're going down. And I'm a single father with two little boys that I'm trying to raise. And these kids, they run back and forth across the street trying to make it to the community center, trying to make it back on the opposite side of the road without getting hit. And believe it or not, there've been a lot of different accidents, uh, different situation incidents right there in that between the four thousand block and the forty-four hundred block that I would like to see it being addressed as far as some caution signs or caution lights, um, put up some brand new red light with a green light and caution light so that, uh, people that are driving down Pines Road in that area will have time to stop them so they won't hit none of these kids that's crossing across the pathway because it's very dangerous. And also we have, um, different type of trees right there in the median where you, uh, people that live in that same vicinity have to go at least an extra block down the road, either, um, to the west or to the east in order to make a turn and come to their own residence to stop from hitting these children. So all I'm asking is to bring to you all's attention is to try to make that area pass road safer than what it actually is because somebody's going to get hit or somebody's child's going to get hit or killed or whatever the case may be. And I definitely don't want that on my conscience because, like I say, I'm, um, a single father running for governor and I'm trying to do the best I can do as far as trying to help the community as well as the state to be in a comfortable position and keep it safe instead of unsafe. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate that, Mr. Slack.
Mr. Chairman, is there something, Madam Mayor, that could be monitored? Because all the residency is across the other side of Pines Road. It goes to, not all, but, but the majority of the, of the residency is across Pines Road opposite of, opposite of Beal Cockle.
Let, let me get with our department to see, our Public Works Department for, for streets and, and for traffic engineering. Let's find out what we can do.
Thank you, thank you.
And as far as the median, uh, as far as the median concerned, uh, I talked to Shelley and we're, we're going out there again tomorrow to look at it and just to, for the trees, the tree visibility. But I hadn't, as far as the, uh, accidents and stuff, that was more up towards the, uh, townhomes where I've seen and what I've got recorded as far as all the accident, mostly accidents that I've had were at the next block which, uh, at the turn by the townhome. But we're going out there to look at the median area.
Thank you, sir, for that observation.
All right, and next we've got Gerald Bowman. Hello, hello.
Special exception to family members. I'm definitely going to change my vote.
Well, since you voted, I want to thank you, Councilman Bradford, for the extension and to the Honorable Mayor, City Council and, uh, wonderful staff. I, I appreciate the time a lot, so I'll keep it brief. Um, I want to discuss, um, tomorrow, we're going to have a, a call to action, uh, press conference type deal. Last night, about nine forty-five PM on our street, um, thirty-six hundred block of Milton Street, I heard about fifteen rounds of gunshots. And when I walked outside, about sixty seconds later, I just walked and looked at the end of the street and I saw a young man lying in the street. And as a result of that, um, I ran down, I held his hand and I prayed for him and I waited until someone came. But the sad thing is, had I not even gone out there, I'm very aggravated that we have citizens who heard the shots just as well as I did, did not call, um, any police presence, did not call for any paramedic assistance, and they just left him out there. And blood was spewing out of the back of him. He's now in critical condition, uh, university health. And I just think it's, um, time and it's sad that we don't not only get upset about what happens with police brutality, I think we should get more upset at what occurs on a daily basis in our community. And I know Councilman Bowman, just like with the street dedication, just like I was emotional, I know he was emotional about when you all voted to do that. I've become more emotional and I feel it's a slap in the face to have that very street to be dedicated for a woman who fought against violence and who stands up just like Councilman Bowman and the rest of everyone does. And, but that to happen right there, it speaks volumes. And it occurs everywhere, but to be at the end of the very same street in which they'll be dedicated and no one called, I think we need to do better as citizens. And I just want to invite everyone out, if you can, and whoever's listening, to be there six PM tomorrow in the same block where the young man is, where we can not only pray but also talk about some things. Because I'll be honest with you, I'm tired of marching. I'm tired of everything that we do and, um, as rhetoric or just to do as, you know, over and over as a formality rather. But then we, we do the same thing over and over, but yet we don't get any different results. And that's probably why. So it's just time for all of us to come together and I just want to invite everyone and let you all know about it. And it's just time for us to do. I know in the summertime, it's, temperatures flare, tempers flare, but we have to continue to stay on it. I know I'm out of town, but I thank you all for a lot of me the time. God bless you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Bowman. We appreciate that. And, um, if there are no other requests for permits, then we are adjourned.